Hello, we're gonna start in just a minute. If everyone could please take their seats. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscarra?
Here.
Mayor Svechny?
Here.
All members present.
Great. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Fabiola, would you do the honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on its own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have someone to do invocation?
Rabbi Haber was unavailable at the moment, so I don't think for today we're gonna have him on vacation.
No invocation? Okay. Alright. Approval of the minutes, then?
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and this is for the Special City Commission meeting regarding the first budget hearing, the regular City Commission meeting for September 14th, and the Special City Commission meeting on September 21st for the second budget hearing.
If I can get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second, please?
I'm a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Next item is the Order of Business, Mayor.
Which one?
The Order of Business.
Oh, I see, okay, so 5A. Oh wait, I need to do my statement first, wait a second.
Yeah, we can do the...
Yeah, let me do my statement. Okay. I'm gonna read it this time. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the Commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, making comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers. I just wanna emphasize that we absolutely, as a body, want to hear everybody, and certainly that there are opportunities to do that. Our last Commission meeting, there was a lot of conversation that we couldn't hear, so we had two additional meetings to accommodate that. However, for the purposes of what we're doing here, we are here to do business. So please, if you want to speak on an item, or you think you want to speak on an item, fill out the card in the back. Mauricio's our city clerk, please give it to him. If you do not fill out the card before the item is called, you will not be asked to speak. I will make sure to ask a couple of times to make sure that Mauricio has all the cards, just out of respect for everybody, but please understand, we're trying to get through the agenda. Great, thank you. We have a few changes to tonight's agenda. We're deferring 10A, 10F, and 10J. Do I need a motion for that separately?
You can read all the items.
Okay. We're revising 10C, 10I, and adding on 10L. So can I get a motion for these changes, please?
I'll move.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a small little change, if everybody would be okay with that. Usually, at the end, number 13, where we have citizen requests, this came up very unexpectedly, and because of the fact that the people that came to present this are from very far away, I'm asking that they be allowed to speak first. If anyone has any objections?
What is the special, what is the...
It's the St. Vincent de Paul Society.
Okay.
No objections? Okay. Ladies, you're up. Do they have to fill out a speaker card? Okay. Please, your name and address and the organization you're representing, please.
Good evening, Honorable Commission, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My name is Anna Urann, 17105 North Bay Road, Weetoune, Arizona, Halesby, Florida. The Society of St. Vincent de Paul is a nonprofit organization that helps the needed and the most fragile of the community. We have a conference here, next to the St. Mary Magdalene Church. This is where we are located. Throughout the years, we've received help and support from the city. And tonight, I have the big honor to introduce our President, Ms. Alicia Galvane, who's got something to say and give to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Berta Alicia Galvane, and I represent St. Vincent de Paul, and also I represent the poor, the needy, and the most unhelpful of the people. I have a plaque for the police department, giving them thanks for all the years. I have 12 years serving this organization, and never once felt me, to give me support for the children, the most needed. I also wanted to thank the Mayor, Larissa Estribe, she always takes time to see if I have enough food, or I have, I need anything with my homeless, or with any need in my charity. Even though I don't live in Sunny Isles, I like to serve this community, because it's where you need it the most. Even though you guys are very wealthy, you still have very poor people that need your help. Children, and families, and the homeless. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Captain Santiago, do you wanna come up? Thank you. And if I can just say a few words, this is the association that usually, in the last couple of years, Commissioner Lama was getting turkeys for, as well, and in the past, Commissioner Goldman, as well. Do we, can we take a picture?
Don't forget, this year, we also have a Thanksgiving and a Christmas.
Great. Can we, do we mind, do you guys mind coming down, take a picture? Okay, great, thank you. Now we're on to special presentations. We have item 5A. Trying to find where to put that, one second. Can you see the other copy of it?
I don't have a copy of it, but I can read it off my computer.
Alright, let me just say something before you read it, and then, yeah. So, this is a proclamation for the month of October, for pedestrian safety month. As a community, I think that this is, not just for us, for many people, extremely important. All of us here in the dais have children, all of us have been touched in this community, some exceptionally, by tragedy. And it's important for us to recognize this month, not just for this month, but pedestrian safety always. In fact, we as a city and as a community have really started standing behind this very seriously. We're doing an event next Tuesday at the school, at 6 o'clock. I encourage everyone to attend, or at the very least, share it. It's open to the community. It's going to be with FDOT and the University of Miami, to really help everyone understand their role in all of this. Mauricio, if you wanna read it, and then I was, I wanted the indulgence of allowing a speaker as well, but if you wanna read the proclamation first.
Okay. The proclamation reads, whereas in 2020, the U.S. Department of Transportation's National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration designated October as the first-ever National Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month. And whereas we continue to navigate our way through a pandemic, now more than ever, our outdoor exercises, such as walking and running, provide physical and mental benefits that boost our emotional well-being, ease symptoms related to chronic mental health conditions like anxiety and depression, improve cardiovascular health, promote sleep and weight loss, reduce cholesterol and tiredness, and increase energy and endurance. And whereas the City of Sunny Isles Beach has always strived to ensure that the streets of the city are safe for pedestrians, and continues to commit resources for the implementation of safety measures. And whereas the city wishes to join the National Traffic, I'm sorry, the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration in raising safety awareness for both pedestrians and motorists alike. Now therefore, do I, Mayor Svechny, as Mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby designate October 2021 as Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach?
Thank you. Ina, would you like to come and say a few words? You could just say your name and address also.
Good evening, my name is Ina Trachtenberg. Unfortunately, I'm here not just to listen, but to say very sad news, whoever doesn't know about my son. But in February 10th of 2020, Anthony Resnick, he was just 11 years old, he was crossing the street on the proper light, on the red light, and the driver, who went through the red light, hit my son, and two weeks fighting in the hospital, we lost him. And since then, I became a huge advocate, or I'm becoming a huge advocate, of pedestrian safety. And I would like to aware everyone that it can happen to anyone, doesn't matter on the age, gender, culture. That's why, it's not just a hashtag, we are using words like pedestrian safety, but we're not even aware of how serious it could be. And obviously, if you take a pedestrian and a driver, we cannot compare the running car that doesn't stop, so pedestrians will always, I think, suffer more than whoever is operating the vehicle. So if you're a parent, please make sure, teach your children, obviously in school, we are giving classes and we are educating, but the more education kids will have in terms of how to cross the street, how to watch, how to, how to be reactive towards certain, you know, mistakes and stuff, that will help so much of saving a lot of lives. And right now, we're working with officials, thank you very much for helping, to create Anthony Resnick's Act, that will punish drivers who are driving aggressively and recklessly. Unfortunately, now, until now, there is no law stating that, you know, it's a criminal act, and we'll be fighting towards getting the law exist, because that, I'm sure, that will save a lot of lives in the future. And people will be, whoever is driving recklessly, most likely will be aware, if the punishment will not be just a red light ticket, but going to jail, or paying a huge fine, and doing community work, that will maybe stop them, and, you know, be aware of paying more attention on the red lights, or stop signs, and stuff like that. So, me as a mother who lost my son, and a huge tragedy, I just wanna aware everyone to be safe and healthy, and make sure that the kids are safe.
Thank you very much. We applaud you, your bravery, and you're an inspiration, and we're gonna continue to support this and work together to get this done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Item 5B, Commissioner Lama?
So, I don't know if you know Mica, Mica, stand up. I don't know if you've seen him running around the city, maybe many of you have, but Mica has done something amazing, basically. So I'll read you a little bit about what he's done. And so Mica is a longtime resident of Sunny Isles Beach, who is passionate about fitness and setting an example of good health for his children. In his pursuit of a healthy lifestyle, he broke a world record. On April 1st, 2021, he ran a half marathon, which is 13.1 miles. He did it again on April 2nd, and has continued to do so for over 200 days straight. He has tracked each run through Strava, it's a special app, and plans to submit to the Guinness Book of World Records when he stops. The old record is 102 straight days, but Mica enjoys it so much and feels so good, he will just keep going until he can't. Through his journey, Mica has met a lot of people interested in his feet. Some joined him along his run, some follow him on Instagram, some know him as the runner at a local coffee shop. Yes, he orders his iced coffee on his Starbucks app, and it is ready for him upon arrival when he completes his run. On Sunday, October 17th of this year, 2021, we had the pleasure, well, Chris, Commissioner Viscarra, Susan, and Mike Tribby, the photographer, we had the pleasure of being at the finish line when Mica hit his 200th straight run. Tonight, we wish to congratulate him on this tremendous accomplishment, and wish him success as he continues his daily pursuit of health and happiness. Mica, congratulations. I am still amazed of what you've done, and it's great. Yep. So...
You wanna take a picture?
Yeah, yeah, let's take a picture. Do you have the...
I apologize, totally. I will have that for you tomorrow.
Okay. Well, we'll just take a pic, we'll take a picture anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Lama. Item 5C, Commissioner Goldman, Proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
I don't know if anybody in the audience had an opportunity to see the mammobus that was stationed at Gateway Park, but it was my great pleasure to be there today in the morning, and to see the city support the most important objective, which is early detection and awareness, and one of the key, one of the key things, and it saved my life, a mammogram, so, and I'm sure it saved plenty others, or relatives, or family members that you know. So, I wanna, I wanna read out this proclamation. Whereas, get my reading glasses. Whereas too many Americans are touched by the pain and hardship caused by breast cancer, a disease that among women is not only one of the most common cancers, but also one of the leading causes of cancer-related death. And whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, and while we have seen an increase in mammography rates and a decline in deaths, there is more we can do. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And whereas too many women do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection to decrease death rates. And whereas the awareness campaign is sending out several key messages, most notably, the American Cancer Society continues to advise women to get annual mammogram screening once they reach age 40. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates in the United States, more than 281,550 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year, and over 43,600 people will die. And whereas the City of Sunny Isles Beach stands in solidarity with breast cancer survivors, and reaffirms our commitment to raising awareness of this disease, and thank countless professionals, researchers, and caregivers who dedicate their lives to fighting for a world without breast cancer. On behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby designates October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody, and thank you to the city for supporting mammography, and thanks for putting this at the forefront. I don't think there's anybody in this room, or who's watching, that hasn't been touched by breast cancer, in your, whether it's your mother, your sister, your child, it really is, it is so omnipresent, and again, detection and awareness is key in this fight.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldman, absolutely, and I think we can all say that, as we recently learned that the governor's wife has been diagnosed.
Casey DeSantis.
Yeah, it's very, very important. 5D, Proclamation Presented for National Bullying Prevention Month.
Okay, here's another issue that's a very core, something that's very near and dear. I do receive inquiries, I received a very disturbing inquiry from a resident very recently, and I actually deferred to our school board representative, Lucy Biasgeller, our honorable school board rep, who I want her to come up and say a couple of words, but first, again, this is also bullying, National Bullying Prevention Month. We know that these, these things occur in our school, here locally, we know that it takes very many different forms, and it's very pernicious, and it's very, it's just a very negative, very upsetting, and it's just an awful situation that we have, and we need to, again, bring it, not sweep it under the rug, but really bring it to the fore, and try to combat in every way possible, in a systemic way, and that, and for that reason, that's why I've invited Lucy Biasgeller to speak a little bit. So, I don't know if you wanna read this, but come up and speak, and love to take a picture, too. Go ahead. See what the school board is doing about this.
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for having me. It's really an honor to be here, among so many great leaders, and good to see so many familiar faces. Lucia Biasgeller, I am your school board member, representing this great, great municipality, and I wanna thank you, Commissioner Goldman, for sponsoring this item, and for bringing forth this wonderful proclamation to recognize National Bullying Prevention Month. And I also wanna thank our mayor and our commissioners for supporting this, and for all the work you do with our students, and for your ongoing efforts, always, to protect our students. And as a school system, which is what I'm here to represent, our school system, and our main priority is to protect all of our students from any dangers. And we recognize the negative impact that bullying has on students' developmental growth, on their self-esteem, and on their academic success, which is what we're, you know, chartered to take care of. So bullying, whether it's physical, verbal, or written, is completely unacceptable in all forms, in our schools, in our community, and anywhere. And we are committed, as a school system, to end bullying in all forms. And as you know, this day and age, we are moving to an increasingly dangerous platform for bullying, which is social media. And that's where we're putting a lot of our efforts, especially this month, is Digital Citizenship Month at Miami-Dade County Public Schools. But social media has such a heavy presence in our lives, and it has become more common to see online bullying, which oftentimes is anonymous, and requires that we, at the school system, have to use the resources of law enforcement and so forth. And this type of harassment, it's emotionally detrimental to our students, it is so persistent, it is so prevalent, and oftentimes, it's so permanent. So, we're really battling our online cyberbullying as much as possible, and as teachers, and as a former teacher myself, and as parents, that many of you are, and people here watching, we may not know what our children are going through, and that's almost the scariest part. Sometimes they do not share, we don't have access to the channels that they're using, we don't know that it's happening, it's occurring online, or through text messages that we're not privy to. And as they get older, it's very often harder to even recognize that it's happening. So we encourage all of you, everybody here, everyone in the committee, to really be involved in the process of bullying prevention. It's one thing that we could do, teach your children about recognizing bullying, again, in all forms, how to prevent it, and most importantly, how to report it. It's important that every student in our schools has an adult that they can trust, and that they can feel comfortable reporting these incidents, too. So, that's why we're here, I'm so, again, honored to be here, thank you for having this proclamation. It's so important to continue to work together, you all, with the school system, and we're here, and we are committed to increasing awareness of anti-bullying resources, of increasing our mental health resources, and of opening up all the avenues through which we can support our adolescents, and they can have access to assistance. And again, as your District 3 school board member, I'm committing to end the cycle of bullying, and to ensuring that all of our students excel socially, emotionally, academically, and thank you again, Commissioner Goldman, Mayor Svechny, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, and to the City of Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I want to make sure that I acknowledge our school and the school police, they have been doing a phenomenal job. Just two weeks ago, we held exactly this, a workshop talking about this. They've been very supportive, and they've been working very hard. I created a PowerPoint for this that I shared with them, so we are very happy that you're here, so that you hear from us how hard they're working, and as a community, how we support this. Thank you, Commissioner Goldman, for sponsoring this.
Thank you all.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we could take a picture? Sure.
Thank you.
Another picture. I apologize for going off the record. Wait, Daniel, don't go. I think there's some student government kids here, is that true? Yes? And since we have our, our school board member, I think he just left. That's okay. There's no one, just, okay, all right, well, we'll wait for him. You don't mind? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that. We are on zoning. All right. Read the statement. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has two zoning applications in these matters. The commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from the city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal. Please make your comments concise. Mr. City Clerk, please read your statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised on the newspaper, notices have been mailed, and posted on the properties. All persons wishing to speak, please raise your right arm, Chief Warden. The sworn testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it. Thank you.
Okay, so who's presenting this?
This is Claudia. But before we continue, are there any ex-party communications that need to be disclosed?
No.
Nobody. Commissioner Goldman?
All right, I, hmm? No, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This application number PC 202115, it's by the applicant A3 Development LLC. It is submitted as a site plan modification of the already approved site plan under Resolution Number 20-Z-176. During this site plan modification of the off-site parking garage for the state of Alquolina located at, I'm sorry for the address, at 17941 Atlantic Boulevard, it is a new address. This type of modification consists of a decrease in the parking count from 473 parking spaces to 432 parking spaces, an increase in the overall height from 105 feet and half an inch, eight stories, to 106, 106 feet, three and nine 16 inches, or 10 stories. And a rear setback decrease from 15 to five feet, from 15 feet to five feet. Further, the applicant is requesting that the art in public places requirement pursuant to Code Section 104-4.2 be deferred to after the site plan approval but prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy or a certificate of occupancy. The art rendering that is submitted along this plan set are not presented for your consideration. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a revised demolition and construction staging and traffic management plans. And lastly, the applicant will want to also have the use of temporary murals and graphics on a temporary construction fence. So based on that, and the staff has no further comments, and this application is not requesting any variance. It is in compliance with our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations. And I just wanted to just make it for the record, under Condition Number Four, that one of the easement, it is for an uncovered parking said walkway connecting Atlantic Boulevard. The record calls for a covered parking. And based on that, if the applicant is accepting all the conditions, we have no further comments. And the applicant will continue with the presentation. Neeson?
Claudia, if I can just get clarification?
Yes.
So we're decreasing parking spaces.
Correct.
We are increasing two stories, but it's only increasing by one foot.
Correct.
And that's, as we discussed, that is for the purposes of removing the lifts.
The mechanical lifts, correct.
So that it would be easier access to the parking spaces? What was the reason for removing the lifts?
Well, it will decrease the height, but the reason I will, the applicant explained why they removed the mechanical lifts.
Okay, and then just for the purposes of the audience, so that people know what we're talking about, because some of this is a little bit jargony. This is the existing parking.
Parking lot.
Parking lot that is, I would say it's south of our building and adjacent to the Bank of America, for those of you that are thinking about where this is. So it's sort of right there. And it's currently being used as a parking lot.
Parking lot, correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, Claudia, can you repeat the part about the covered? I missed the.
It's under Condition Number Four in the staff report.
Right.
We should have stated that this is an uncovered pedestrian safe walkway. It's not covered. It's the, for the permanent walkway that is going to connect Atlantic Boulevard to Collins Avenue.
Right.
That pedestrian covered at some version of the plan previous to this application was covered.
Correct.
At this moment, it's uncovered.
Okay, and that's what's in here? And where, and is the condition, is the condition that it be covered? Or it just, it got uncovered in this version of the plan?
In this version, it's uncovered.
Okay.
It's going back to the original uncovered pedestrian path.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. Neeson Kazdin and Wes Evi from Ackerman, representing the applicant. If I could, we have a brief PowerPoint, if we could, please load that up. There we go. And as usual, Claudia and staff have done an excellent job in going through this application. So I'll explain it just very briefly. What do I do there? Okay. The site you're all familiar with, I don't think I need to go through that with you. In terms of the modifications to the site plan, there is really no fundamental change to the garage. What we're doing is making the garage a little bit smaller in terms of the number of parking spaces. We're making it a more efficient layout by removing the mechanical lifts and slightly elongating the garage on the rear side of the garage as well. As I say, the parking space is reduced from 473 to 432. The height actually of the garage is only going up by about one foot. This will also allow a trellis to be placed in the top level of the garage, which will provide additional cover and protection of view of the garage itself, so it's an enhancement to the garage. The rear setback, as Claudia has mentioned, will be reduced by 10 feet. That is not the side-facing Atlantic Boulevard, but it's the side on the back of the garage. And in fact, the lot has an irregular shape, so there's really only a small portion of it which will project further to the, of the building, to the east. Most of the rest of the garage is set back. If I go back for one second, you can see the parcel itself. You see how there's a little bit of a, of a portion of it that sticks out to the east, and it's an irregularly shaped lot. That are, these are designs of the garage, as Claudia had mentioned as well. The art is illustrative only. We will be seeking the approval of the Art in Public Places Committee. Public benefits have also been mentioned, which do not exist today and will continue to exist or be added on to what was already previously approved, the pedestrian pathway to allow passage from Atlantic Boulevard to Collins Avenue. There are three easements for the benefit of the city, which I'll show you shortly as well. And an additional easement, which has been requested by the city, which is a rooftop easement to allow the installation of police communications antenna. And go to the next slide. That is, if you can make it out, that is the site plan for the garage itself. What I'd like to draw your attention to finally, though, are the easements that are being granted to the city. One is, of course, the alleyway that lies on the east side of the property to provide access through to City Hall. Will be provided and maintained for the benefit of access to the City Hall area parking garage. Number two, parking spaces, as you see in the smaller oval shape on the east side of the garage, which will be provided for the use and benefit of the city. Number three, the long east-west easement is the pedestrian promenade which will allow the passage from Atlantic Boulevard to City Hall into Collins Avenue. And finally, on Atlantic Boulevard itself, there will be an easement for a bus stop. The other one that was mentioned, of course, is also the easement on top of the roof which will allow for the police communications equipment. It will be landscaped, heavily landscaped as well. And so with that, we request your approval, and we're here. If you have any questions, the Director of Construction for Alquolina, Rick Chitwood, is here, if you have any questions as well.
Thank you. Before everyone begins, I just want, my only reservation or my concern was during the construction process, as we just talked about pedestrian safety and making sure that all things are considered when we're talking about the construction and how the trucks are coming in off of Collins, so that when the kids are coming to school, there is basically zero disruption. And I know that there was conversation, Claudia, I think you said that the trucks will be arriving before eight or after nine. Is that correct? That was part of the discussion? I just wanted to clarify that for the audience.
Right, we had discussions that we can accommodate, they will accommodate to either the trucks come earlier or after the school period. You know, the.
The drop-off.
Yeah, the drop-off.
Great, all right, thank you. Discussion from the day is, who would like to go first? Commissioner Viskar?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can we open it up for public comment first?
I apologize, yes, I'm sorry. Any, do we have any public comment?
We do.
Okay.
Jerry Joseph?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Joseph. I live at 18560 North Bay Road. And my first question is, how did we get to this point that we have to have this eyesore of a garage in the middle of our city? Claudia?
Jared.
Please answer that question.
Jared, this is your time to speak. We're not, it's not a debate.
Yeah, well, no, I have a question. My comment is a question.
Well, someone from the day can ask that question on your behalf if you would like, when it's, but this is your time to speak. You have the three minutes.
Well, that is, that is what I, that is what I.
Okay, we will ask them to address it. Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it for public comments.
Okay. Commissioner Viskar?
I wanted to ask regarding the change in the covered, going from the covered path to the uncovered path, why was that change made?
The previous application, which it was not presented to the commission, was requesting a variance. In order to request that variance, the applicant was proposing to cover that pathway, but we would have to have granted a variance to do that. So that's why they withdrawn that application, and they came with this version of the application, or of the plan.
Why would a variance be required to cover the pathway?
Because you will have to bring in a structure right to the property line, because the pathway, it's right on to the property line edge.
The structure being whatever would hold up.
Whatever will cover it.
The coverage?
Yes.
And so rather than ask for a variance, we just did away with the.
Correct.
With the covering.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a concern with that. I mean, I understand, because we're not, you know, fans of variances. But we're also supposed to be trying to shift towards, you know, thinking about pedestrian safety and focusing on prioritizing pedestrians. And I find uncovering the path that's supposed to take our kids through a, through a, I mean, I understand why that decision was made. I'm just not comfortable with that outcome.
If I may, Commissioner, it will also be heavily landscaped with trees that will also provide shade, so it will be, make it much, a nice pedestrian pathway. So that's part of why it will work well.
Yeah, I remember that, 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 that plan that was almost advanced. For me, that was a non-starter, because we wanted to move the, to the right to the property line. So I remember that, that point, so.
Commissioner Viskar, do you have anything else?
Yes, I had another question. It's, I saw somewhere, I think, do we have a, in the, I just can't, I couldn't find it when I was preparing for the meeting. Is there a, will there be any, like a gas station or any fuel tanks or anything relate, anything fuel-related in this garage?
No.
There's not, maybe it was some kind of pump, any pumps? I don't know what I'm confusing it with.
Only your city pumps.
The city pumps, okay. Are they, are they being moved? Or they're staying where they are?
They're staying, they're not being moved.
Okay. And, let's see. No, in terms of questions, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Goldman?
Well, I had a.
No, I, you know, I'd spoken about the five-foot, the moving of the rear setback line, but I'm comfortable with that, and it's within the, within the code, and it's not a budding, you know, it's a budding the property line, but it's, there's a, there's a full setback area, so it's not as if, it's like hitting, a budding, a budding the rear property.
Exactly.
So I'm comfortable with that, with that modification.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lama?
Understand, because of, I'm okay with the height. I mean, you're just going one foot more. But with the actual setback, I just wanted to understand why you're elongating it, you know, eastwardly. So just wanted to understand from a structural standpoint, because you're actually decreasing the amount of parking spaces. So I just wanted to, to understand that.
And certainly, Commissioner, and as Commissioner Goldman mentioned, if you look at the property line itself, it's an irregular property line, so it's only a small portion that extends out the, further to the east, really. That said, this will make for a more efficient operating garage, eliminating the mechanical lifts, which I think is a benefit for neighbors and overall, and then, under any circumstance. And, but in order to accommodate enough spaces and in order to have an efficient enough garage, the slight expansion to the, to the east is required. So that's really why. It's to accommodate enough spaces, have the garage operate more efficiently, but without having the need for mechanical lifts.
When you say operate more efficiently, is it better for cars, for ingress and egress, when cars are coming in and out, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Well, I mean, particularly also within the garage itself.
Yeah, they're going around.
Right, instead of having to have lifts where you have to, you know how they operate, you'd have to lift one car up, then back, the other car back. And this is just, will lead to a much smoother operation for the garage.
Okay. And do you recall how many linear feet, the portion of the setback variance is?
It's not a variance, but the change.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Changes 10 feet.
Changes setback, I'm sorry, yeah.
Changes 10 feet.
10 feet? Okay, all right.
All right.
I'm happy you're getting rid of the mechanical lifts.
Yeah.
Thank you. So again, for the record, I just want to say that the biggest concern for us always is really pedestrian safety. We want to make sure that that is part of the entire construction plan. And if you could just, Claudia or someone in the team could just speak a little bit about the design and how, how it conforms or does not conform to, to our code, as was questioned from the audience.
Sure, to your previous point, in our previous zoning resolution, it's one of the conditions, actually, that they have to coordinate the trucking deliveries within the school. So it is not just our discussions or agreements, it's already part of one of their conditions that they need to met. In terms of the design, this version of the garage is meeting all the code requirements in terms of zoning. They are way below, actually, the height that is allowed within that zoning district. They don't create any sort of impact in terms of traffic, because it is not a traffic generator, generator per se, because it is not an office or a condominium association that it will be attracting, even though you have the cars coming in and out of that, but it's from already other uses that they're creating those trips. In terms of the design, we have a plain palette for the exterior, but eventually we'll have, we'll be backing to you with the art component. So I'm pretty sure that they will continue working with the art component, as you saw some renderings for the proposed art component that they will have.
All right, yeah, thank you. I just want to say for the benefit of the audience, they do have an art component, and the Public Arts Advisory Committee, which I'm the liaison, met with them, and the artist Brito, who is going to be a resident of our city and is working very hard to make sure that. that this is going to be a beautiful, not just a parking lot, but a beautiful building, so just, you know, stay tuned to that. So with that, can I get a motion, please?
I had an additional question.
Oh, you did, go ahead, Commissioner Viscara.
I remembered, actually, what it was, it was, I actually took a picture of the plan, it's a fire, a fire pump room. It wasn't, it wasn't a fuel tank, it was a fire pump room, what is that?
That's a requirement, actually, they will have to have for the operations.
Yeah, but what is it?
Do you have the certification, so the pump itself that is going to be placed?
What is the purpose of the fire pump, is that a requirement?
I'm sorry? I was just curious what that, what it was, that's all. Okay, and you say, and it runs on diesel? And it's inside the, the structure? So, so there is a diesel tank in there?
Inside the building.
Inside, okay. Alright. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Go ahead.
Did you have another question, Commissioner?
I just had a comment, because I made my questions and I didn't make my comment.
I, I apologize.
That's okay, that's fine.
Would you like to say some?
I need to talk faster. No, I just wanted to, my only comment, which is unrelated, you know, to, to what you were saying, is that, you know, we were talking earlier, in unrelated thing to, to your project, about having a feasibility study in regards to things that we're thinking of doing with these spaces. So that would be my, my only reservation would be that, that I, I don't, as I understand it, I don't think it would impact anything, but I'm not an expert, and so that would be my, my only reservation would be that I have no idea if this would in any way affect the other things that we had talked about. But, everything else I think I understand.
Okay.
Now I'm done.
Alright, but I just want to clarify, this isn't something that you, you are asking to put in, this is a requirement that we have, is that correct?
The spaces for the city?
No, 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 I think that, what Commissioner Viscara is referring to is the fire pumps.
Well, I think that's part of it, but also just the extension, but, but yes, certainly the, the fire part, I mean, because we were told in a different meeting that there being a gas station, that that might be an issue with us wanting to put a police station there, and so when I saw that fire pump in that, that corner, I wondered if that might have an impact. I have no way of knowing, because we haven't gotten the feasibility study yet, and I, and I understand that, I mean, that may not be something that you can answer, but it's, it's a, it's a loose reservation, just because I don't, I don't know what I don't know.
These are, I think, are only building and fire code requirements for a structure like this.
Okay, and would it, could we put it on the others, on the other side of the building? Would it be possible to move it? It has to be there? Okay, so it has to be there? It absolutely has to be there, okay. I understand, thank, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion from Commissioner Lama? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, this is a roll call. Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
No.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The application passes, was approved three to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. If, if the commission doesn't mind, I see Daniel is back. Is there anyone else in the audience that has been just elected into the student government at Norman S. Settle Cup K8? If you guys can just come up, we could get a picture with our school board member, and us, again, if you guys. Would you, you haven't been inducted yet, so if you don't mind, if you can go in the microphone for the record, so we get each of your names and just what your positions are right now.
My name is Julie Conrad, and I got the position of Treasurer.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Kim, and I got the position of Recording Secretary.
Hello, my name is Aparu Bapapri, and I got the position of ESAC Representative.
Hi, my name is Elica Borami, and I have the position of Vice President.
Hi, I'm Bianca Lama, and I have the position of PTA representative.
Hey, alright.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys, thank you, congratulations. Okay, we move on to six B, please.
Six B is a request from Florida House Turnberry as the applicant for a site plan modification of the property located at 17749 Collins Avenue, Unit 1802, for a balcony enclosure and corridor. And, I'm sorry, Claudia, any X party communications for this item?
No.
Thank you.
Mayor Vice Commissioners, this application, PC 2021-18, it is requesting a site plan modification and a transfer development rights. I'm sorry, Mauricio, can we read the resolution?
Yes, I'm sorry, this has a companion item, which is 10G, and it's relating to the TDRs for that property, and I'll just read it into the record really quickly. It's a resolution approving the purchase and assignment of transfer development rights in the amount of 287 square feet of floor area ratio and zero dwelling units from the city's public TDR bank account to Florida House Turnberry LLC.
Their site plan modification is for the entire mansions of Aquilina, but is going to only be applied to unit, the dwelling unit 1802, which is requesting a balcony and a portion of a hallway enclosure to be part of that unit. The floor area, the floor area ratio increase, it is by 287 square feet through the city TDRs program. The site plan modification will increase the overall square footage of FAR for the mansions of Aquilina from 432,967 square feet of floor area ratio to 433,254 square feet of floor area ratio. Further, the applicant is requesting approval of the purchase and assignments of transfer development rights in the amount of 287 square feet of FAR and zero dwelling units from the city's public TDR bank account. This application is not requesting any variances, and it is in compliance with our comprehensive plan and land development regulations, and based on our review, if the applicant accepts all the conditions, we don't have any objection. The applicant representative is here tonight also, so she will continue the presentation if you have any questions.
Okay, this is, so basically, this is a balcony enclosure?
Correct.
Okay, alright, do we have any public speaker?
No public speakers for this.
Alright. Any discussion from the commission? Commissioner Lama? Commissioner Goldman?
No, there's precedent for this.
Commissioner Viscara? Alright, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
A second? Okay, yeah.
Roll call. Commissioner Lama?
What, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Lama?
Your vote?
Your vote?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The application is approved four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, and for the record, that also applies to the TDR resolution.
What number was the TDR resolution?
It was 10G.
10G, okay, great. Thank you. Alright, ordinances for first reading, then we have nine A, no, second reading, sorry, nine A.
Second reading, nine A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending section 183-1, permits required of chapter 183, licenses and permits of the City of Sunny Hills Beach Court of Ordinances to provide for a penalty for violations, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the second reading of this ordinance, there is a change between the first reading and the second reading after our legal department has advised it. Basically, the fine for the first violation is going to be $250, and then a repeat violation is going to bring back up to $500.
Per day.
Per day.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any public comment?
Not for this, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Viscara, did you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Goldman? Commissioner Lama? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we move on to resolutions, 10B.
10B is a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill 224 and House Bill 105, which would allow local governments to regulate smoking in the parks and on beaches.
Okay, so, this is the third year that we are supporting this bill, this is Senator Gruders, who is, just to give you a sense, this is very much a supported nonpartisan bill, he is actually the president of the Republican Party for the state of Florida. This is a bill that helps with what we've always been fighting for, which is home rule. This does not mean that we would be outlawing smoking on the beaches or the parks, it just gives us as a municipality, if this was to be passed, the ability to regulate that. Right now, we cannot, so while you see signs in the parks saying, "Thank you for not smoking", that is more of a nice-to-have than a requirement. We've talked about this, a lot about the pollution on the beaches, and anyone that's participated in beach cleanup knows that so much of what you're picking up is cigarette butts. So, this is again in support of his bill, I'm hopeful that it will pass this year, I've been in touch with his office, they think that there is an opportunity, and as a body, we have always pushed very hard to support anything that allows us to consider and to create rules and ordinances that make sense for our community together, whether that be to ban smoking, or to have a smoking section, or to allow smoking, it should be under our purview. So I wholeheartedly support this, and I think that the rest of the commission agrees, so.
Is this the third year that this is being introduced?
This is the third year, yes. So, it failed the last two years, it never went up for a vote, it failed the last committees.
Did it go, did it go through a full committee, or it's just?
No. Well, right now, it's not been, it's not been heard yet, for this year.
Right, but, you know.
It's going to be going, yes. But there is, there is an opportunity for it actually to, to pass, it's got a lot of support.
We have a public speaker, Jerry Joseph.
Okay.
Hello, Jerry Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. I would actually like to see this resolution extended to malls and shopping centers where there are overhangs, smoking in those areas where the cigarette smoke can't flow freely to free air is a health hazard, and I'm hoping that the state would recognize that, like other states such as New York, where smoking is not legal in those areas.
Thank you.
Possibly I can also speak with state representatives to try to have that extended.
Thank you, Jerry.
And that's it.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep.
I'm always out of, out of step, apparently.
I, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to encourage our residents, you know, if you have an idea like that, or if you just really like this, this idea, we can do our part and, and have the resolution, and then get sent to various people, but you can do your part too, you know, send those emails, send your letters, and support the legislation, so that when they're up there in Tallahassee trying to say, "Look, there's support for this", they actually have some evidence to show it, and say, you know, "These are voters, these are residents", and it creates just a little bit more, plus it's always good to have civic engagement. And I would say the same thing for the legislation that's being, it was touched on, on the pedestrian safety, the Anthony Resnick Act, there's legislation being put forward there with, by Senator Pizzo and Representative Vance Alapis, Alupis?
Alupis.
Alupis, yeah. And I would encourage everyone to express support for that as well, that's SB 476 for Alupis, and in the Senate, it's HB 297. And then on this one, also, if you don't like it, speak up, we can do our part, but so can you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, I have a comment to add to that, so, you know, if you see legislation at the state level that you want to support, go to the Florida Legal Cities' website, and there, for any bill that is being proposed, any new legislation, the Florida Legal Cities will give you a summary and will tell you who are the senators and the legislators involved, and you could email them. So you could see who's opposed, who's in favor, so you could do that part, also you could communicate with us, and we'll make sure that that email is forwarded to, to the right senator or state representative. Okay, so the Florida Legal Cities' website is a good, good source of information and a good tool.
Thank you, Commissioner Lama.
It can't hurt.
Motion from Commissioner Goldman, who would like to second?
I'll second.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 10C.
10C is a resolution denouncing Ben &amp; Jerry's and its parent company Unilever PLC and its decision to boycott the West Bank and Gaza Strip.
Okay. I'm sure that many of you have been following the news and some of the controversy with what's happening with some boycotts in Israel, and also because of what Unilever is doing, so I'm gonna read this into the record, and then if my colleagues want to have some discussion, I would appreciate that. The Boycott, Divestment and Sanctions Movement, BDS, seeks the divestment of University Municipal Church Union and other investment portfolios from companies that advocate claims aids Israel's occupation, as well as the boycott of Israeli products, professionals, professional associations, and academic institutions, and artistic performances in Israel and abroad. The BDS movement mirrors anti-Jewish, antisemitic tactics used by the Nazi regime. When the Nazis came to power, the lives of German Jews changed drastically. On October 1st, 1933, the Nazis carried out the first nationwide planned action against them, a boycott of Jewish businesses. Nazi spokesmen claimed the boycott was an act of revenge against both German Jews and foreigners, including US and English journalists. On July 19th, 2021, Ben &amp; Jerry's announced plans to stop selling its ice cream in the West Bank and Gaza, saying that the sales in the occupied Palestinian territory are inconsistent with their values. Both BDS movement and the Ben &amp; Jerry's announcement claim to be driven by a principal concern for Palestinian human rights, but the idealistic message is arguably a smokescreen for a nationalistic agenda to abolish the state of Israel. Both BDS movement and the Ben &amp; Jerry's announcement claim to be driven by a principal concern for Palestinian human rights, but the idealistic message is arguably a smokescreen for a nationalist agenda to abolish the state of Israel. As of July 29th, 2021, the state of Florida added As of July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, the state of Florida added Unilever PLC, the parent company of Ben and Jerry's, the scrutinized companies that boycott Israel list maintained by the state pursuant to Florida statute, which prohibits investments by the state Board of Administration and companies that boycott Israel. Uh on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty, resolution twenty twenty thirty thirty-four, the City Commission denounced the global boycott divestment and sanctions movement and other boycotts of Israel. We as a city and and uh as as a state are are huge supporters of Israel's and its right to exist and I think almost every single person on on this day has supported some sort of resolution in support um of Israel and I know that Commissioner Lama wanted to add something to this, so Commissioner Lama, if you want to co-sponsor this with me, I would be happy to.
Commissioner, can you uh your microphone?
No, 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 I just wanted to change something, so it 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 was in accordance with the actual memorandum, yeah.
You don't want to, okay, so would anyone like to say anything then?
No.
Commissioner Goldman?
I'm I'm okay with the the resolution, yeah.
I mean, I've certainly supported um these uh these initiatives, whether it was uh through Airbnb uh resolution um in Judea and Samaria, um I advanced the first ordinance on antisemitism, so I'm obviously a big supporter of uh of these types of initiatives, so I'm I'm definitely in favor of it.
Commissioner Viscara? I I just want to add that this this goes beyond just our us supporting it, this means that we as a city will not be purchasing these products. Um so, no more briars, we never had it, so it doesn't really matter for us. So anyways, can I have a uh motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Ten D.
Ten D is a resolution approving an increase of the purchase order with Altech Industries for the purchase of a bucket truck.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and City Staff, um the uh Hollywood Department is um requesting for the approval of an of an increase uh to the purchase order with Altech Industries to um for the purchase of the bucket truck, uh in an amount not to exceed uh three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, uh the reason why is that uh the surcharge on the uh steel industry, so the vendor is requesting that and it's adding those three hundred three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars on a total amount not to exceed on the same PO of a hundred thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars.
It's an expensive bucket truck.
Yes.
Okay, uh do we have any public comment? Okay, uh Commissioner Lama, do you have any questions? Commissioner Goldman?
No.
Commissioner Viscara, you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay, can I take a motion?
No, but wait, no, I'm just kidding.
Uh second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Ten E.
Ten E is a resolution approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-three freightliner, a conventional chassis setback axle vehicle, which is known as a dump truck.
Yes, um so yes, we're looking for the approval for a uh new dump truck, two thousand twenty-three uh freightliner uh using the Sheriff Association uh program contract, uh the current bucket truck we have is from two thousand and five and it's uh not the best of shapes, um that's the reason why um we're planning to.
Okay. Thank you, any public comment?
No.
Anyone on the commission have any questions? Can I take a motion?
So moved.
Get a second? Great.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, ten H.
Heard with six B.
Yes.
A resolution approving the request submitted by Cross-Atlantic Builders for the placement of two temporary banners at the Aurora condominium tower located at one seventy-five fifty Collins Avenue.
Mayor Commissioners, um this is a request from Cross-Atlantic uh Builders LLC for two temporary banners. Um the banners are already installed, this is an after-the-fact approval, uh the banners, if approved, they should be removed from a year within a year um from the date of the approval unless an extension is provided by the city manager or designated and the approved banners cannot be relocated, um there is also a representative from uh the applicant tonight, so if you have any questions for for him as well.
Do we have any public comment? Okay, so I I just wanted to say that um I I did have a concern with these banners, I know it seems like it's not a big deal, but my question was to Claudia, I pushed back kind of hard, why are we uh getting these requests for approval after the fact? So, is the applicant here?
Yes, yeah, the the applicant is here, but why, basically, uh for any temporary banner of this size um construction, actually, we cannot approve it administratively before, they have to come to you for your approval and then we can approve it under a building permit, so it's basically a higher standard for this kind of banners to be placed on construction um towers.
Okay, so my concern was how does this differ for someone that, let's say, i- has a single-family home that does something without a permit? Uh are we treating them the same as we would treat a regular resident that is doing any sort of work before they get a permit?
Definitely, they they had already, they have already a code violation, um so they are being, you know, uh fined for that matter, and then on top of that, they will have to pay also a double fee for their building permit whenever they come for that. They had come already, but we haven't been been able to approve it because they have your, they have to obtain your approval first.
Okay, and you said that from the date, for one year, you said F from the date of approval?
From this approval.
But how many months has it been up already?
I will like to say, how many months?
Six?
Six months.
Okay, so I I have a concern with that then, because for me, that means that it's been up for six months, so they get six more months.
They can reduce it to six months.
Okay, does anyone else on the commission have any comments or reservations, Commissioner Viscara? No?
I hadn't realized that that they they were all, they had already been up without, I I didn't realize that, and certainly, if if um so you're saying they are, they are gonna be penalized?
They have, they have.
So they're basically gonna get, if we approve it like this, they get penalized and they get a year and a half out of it, as opposed to a year, because it's already been up for six months.
Right, if if you don't modify it, if we modify it, they will be for just six more months from this date.
Okay, and I I think that, you know, as as long as there there's a consequence for what they did, um because if not, then we're gonna have to go through this again, right, in six months, I assume, so as long as, I'm okay as long as they're um they're being, they're they're being penalized for for wrongdoing, I think it's okay for the year.
Understood.
Yeah.
The year from today, you're saying?
Yeah, because they're paying for those six months, right, they're being penalized for those six months, that's what you're saying, right, Claudia?
They have to pay double fee for their building permit, so they will pay the double of what it had a cost.
I'm okay.
The double fee of the permit, okay.
I mean, I just feel like they're already, there there is a consequence for that, and they're paying that consequence.
Correct.
Commissioner uh Goldman, did you have any questions? Commissioner Lama?
Yeah, do do we know when that building is gonna be finished?
It's not part of this vote, but.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Hi, good morning, I'm George Chima Moros with uh Cross-Atlantic Builders, uh one seven six zero zero one seventy. First of all, I want to say, I do apologize, maybe we just weren't really uh familiarized with the process of it, but in in no way, shape or form were we trying to get away with something on the same note, which answers both of the questions, um. It is very challenging right now for construction and a lot of things happening, but if our goal and our target would try to be within the end of the first, first quarter, second quarter of twenty twenty-two, therefore, we don't even think it would go an extra year, uh it would be six to eight months roughly, and hopefully, if we sell out, less, and that's, that's really the uh, that's really the answer. So that's, that's what we're targeting for right now, if everything goes well, yeah, around uh, you want a month dates, uh March to May of of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh ten I.
Ten I is a resolution approving an agreement with Zabel Artworks Inc. for the design and construction of a custom art fountain sculpture to be placed in the meditation garden at Town Center Park.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, um I am here on behalf of the Public Art Advisory Committee, unfortunately, the chair chairman was out of town, um this is the same fountain, and I think it'll be on the screen. It's the same fountain and sculpture that was presented to you at the joint workshop between yourselves and the PAC in June of twenty twenty-one, and there was consensus at that time that this was the art selection for the meditation garden to go be placed on the furthest west art circle, um it just took us that while, that time to get his agreement together, and it's presented to you today.
Thank you, Susan, I I have to say, as again, the liaison for the Public Arts Advisory Committee, I'm very happy that this is finally happening, it's been, if you remember, two years since we approved the meditation garden, that's where the old skate park used to be, and it's probably one of the biggest questions of people that live in that area, especially Winston Towers, is when we're gonna start doing something with that, so this is really, really exciting, the Public Arts Advisory Committee has worked very hard, um I'm sorry that Javier wasn't able to be here to present, but I know you worked very hard, and I just want to get clarification, this includes everything.
This is everything, this is the design, the um not just the design of the art sculpture, but of the fountain, the plumbing, the mechanical, he will work directly with our landscape architect to incorporate all of that into her civil plans, so I'll be permitted together, he will manufacture it, he will install it, he will oversee it as the project manager for that.
And for the purposes of comparison, for for those in the audience, this is obviously a work of art down in outside, while it was the art component, you can argue it's not a work of art, so the fountain outside, how much did that approximately cost? I know it was a long time ago, when the when the chamber was built.
Well, it was also part of like.
Yes, if you give it just so people have a sense.
The best I could give you is, we had some damage to the tile and we had to repair the tile, and just the repair for the tile was sixty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand fifteen.
Okay, thank you, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, uh Jerry Joseph.
Where is this um?
Jerry, Jerry, you're, we're not asking questions, we're, the the commission asked the questions, you can make your comments, your your time is starting.
So um I understand, it's my understanding that this fountain is not manufactured in Florida. Anyone have, know whether that's true or not?
We will, we'll can answer those questions once your time is up.
Fine, so my idea is that we have enough wonderful artists and designers in Florida, that we, that this city should have a um way of buying Florida and shopping Florida, we don't need our uh landscape people or our designers or our artists from outside of Florida.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
So we had previously approved this, correct?
Yes.
This was vetted by the PAC and?
The PAC, um our consultant had done a lot of research, um talked to many different artists and um to try to find something within the budget, this was an amazing find. Um it is really difficult to get somebody who's going to do both the art sculpture and the functionality of a fountain all in one.
Okay.
So that it works together, it flows together, and yes, conceptually, this has been for you and there was consensus at that time in June.
Right, and and I, again, for the for the benefit of whoever's watching and the audience, the Public Arts Advisory Committee is a committee of volunteer residents, uh that are professionals in their own right, whether they be in in art or design, um and they have worked very hard for, now they've been together how many years? Three years, going on four, uh and again, they their qualifications are outstanding, but besides that, it's their commitment, and they come and they volunteer, and they're residents, and they're the ones that present this to us, they make the recommendation. Um and based on those recommendations and a lot of work and time from staff, this is how we come to to these decisions.
And to refresh your memory, at that meeting, there were a couple of options, this was the preferred sculpture.
Right.
Yeah, for me, um as Lynn will attest to, it was really my, my vision and my idea to say let's bait a test on this meditation garden, and I think you could, the PAC's done a great job, I really was kind of catalyzed that to say, let's, let's make this our first really big project, and um I think it's now coming to fruition, so it's nice to see the iteration of that.
Yes, finally.
Commissioner Viscara, do you have any questions, something to add?
Only that, um I, there are some residents who who are saying, oh, why why don't we make another playground, why don't we, but this is part of a of a much larger conversation, the uh of having an adult space, I mean, what a nice uh contrast from the skateboard park that had, that was echoing everywhere, uh to go into a meditation garden, to have an adult space, a quiet space um for for people in that area, because even though now we have Gateway, which wasn't really up and running when when this was, you know, thought of, uh it's, it's still, if you're a, if you're not a driver, uh that's a a nice place for like the Winston Towers and and our our adults to be, uh in a in a quiet space, I think uh that's a lovely uh selection.
Yes, and thank you, that reminds me, um because it has been so long since we put that schematic before you, um there are two art circles, there's actually three, but one is gonna be like a covered patio area. The muse, the donation of the artwork from the muse will be in the second.
Was that the, the, like the?
The Lotus Woman?
Okay.
And then, and then the third one would be this.
And and Susan, uh once, assuming this is approved, can you give us a little sense of how long it will be until we can finally meditate in the garden?
So I love, um Zabo has a very um aggressive scheduling.
Would love aggressive.
Twenty twenty-two.
June twenty twenty-two.
However, that's for his component, there's um permitting and other things that the landscape architect is gonna have to work through.
And the permitting is done through the county or through us?
Because we're disturbing the ground, it's gonna have to go through DARM, which is typically a delay, we're still waiting for a hearing from them for our um peer shade covers, so.
Got it, thank you, can I get a motion please?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ten K.
Ten K is a resolution awarding bid number twenty-one oh eight oh one-two and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the stout group for the construction of the Golden Shores Utility Undergrounding Project.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for letting us present this this evening, as you know, for several years, we've been working on trying to bring a comprehensive underground project complete to the, to the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and this is the last step. Um we um advertised for bids, we had mandatory uh pre-bid meetings, we issued addendums, we answered questions, and we received five bids. The bids ranged, uh the bid range was extensive, the low bid was four point four million dollars, the high bid was seven point nine million dollars. The second and third bids were five point eight and six point oh million. Um in our opinion, the low bid is non-responsive and non-responsible. I'll let you ask questions if you care to, and I'll elaborate on the, at that point, we've um carefully reviewed the scope, the 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 dollar amounts, the time required, taking into major consideration, the trying to minimize the disruption to the community, um as, I don't have to tell you, Golden Shores, single-family residential properties, we want to make this as comfortable as possible, and even saying that, it's going to be a difficult project to do. We don't want to rush it, we don't want to belabor it, we'd like this to go as nicely as the street lighting project did, which I think you've all had an opportunity to see the results of, so um with your uh with your approval, we'd like to let the manager and I move forward with uh exercising this contract with Stout Builders.
Thank you, do we have public comment?
Not for this man.
I I just want to say, as as a resident of Golden Shores, I, this has just been something that everyone's been waiting for for so long, uh and it's so appreciated, and we've been talking about this for many years, and the the street lighting was just fantastic, I, you know, we were all at the event where we, you know, put the lights on, and so that neighborhood is very appreciative uh of of all the care and and the work that you've been putting into. uh, of, of all the care and, and the work that you've been putting into it personally and the city staff has. Um, so I want to make sure that you, you know that, um, and that, that they are very, very excited about this.
I, I would like to thank you for that, but I also want to commend the community, the neighbors. We had one complaint during the streetlight project, one complaint.
That it was too bright?
No, 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 during the execution of it and it was, you know, their driveway got dirty and, and this, this, this phase of the work's going to be much more difficult than the street lighting, but I think we have a conscientious and appropriate approach to executing this project. Um, we could do it cheaper and we could do it faster, but does anybody want to have two hundred and thirty-eight residents upset for a year? I don't think so.
No one on this day is. So Commissioner Goldman, you got a question?
Is this going to be more challenging or less challenging because you don't have all the wiring and all the, you know, the difficulties that you have on the main street or is this going to be a more expedited and what, what kind of timeline can you anticipate for this?
Well, answering your question is kind of in a backward way. We're, we're anticipating and we really think the appropriate timeframe to complete the project is eighteen months. Um, that allows for a very systematic approach to each a group of three or four homes at a time without tearing up entire streets as we were forced to do in Collins because of the limited timeframe. Um, I honestly believe that this will be a much cleaner, cleaner in, in, in execution project. We have a better feeling of what's there compared to the unknowns. I, I almost guarantee you, we don't have any buried seawalls.
I was just gonna say that.
Um, we don't have the issues that we're going to encounter, the unforeseen utilities. We're going to take particular care with the individual sanitary sewer laterals. Uh, you've seen it. You've seen it's been going on for the last several years. Uh, the uh, Wassa has been in system, not systematically, uh, on a, on an emergency basis, fixing individual, single-family home laterals. We've paid particular attention and cautioned all the bidders about what's there. You know, the ones that have been repaired, they're going to be easy. The old clay pipe sanitary sewer laterals are going to be vulnerable. But the contractor's directed and specifications, they are to be prepared with the necessary repair equipment that should that hap- when that does happen, it will happen, they will be able to affect a repair in minutes.
Right.
We don't have to wait for the sewer company to come out. So uh, yes, it's going to be a better project
It's more compact and self-contained, so it's going to be a lot easier to
Yes, yes, yes.
The logistics are more favorable, so you'll have a much easier rollout of this.
Less traffic, we'll be able, and we will only execute this project during the daytime. Not going to go into a single-family residential area and work at night. If there's an emergency, of course, we'll work at night, but, but the project will be executed in the daytime. We won't have the traffic and we have a very systematic approach of how we're going to go down the streets. Um, and uh, it will be a better project.
And I'm sure you learned a couple of things along the way.
I learned something today when FPL didn't show up to do something. Thank you for the opportunity to give a shot. Um, it's been a challenge on Collins.
Uh, Commissioner Lama, did you have any questions or comments?
No, just uh, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Riscar?
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate your work. You're, 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 it's got big price tags, but they're, they're worth it. It's a big job. I understand you're doing
I'll second, I'll second that.
Golden Shores deserves it. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move, I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I did have one note that I forgot to mention.
Okay.
We will be back. We will be back. There are two elements. We've, we've settled with FPL. We, we have resulted. We have a credit forthcoming from FPL for the work that we've, you know, as accumulated. We will be back to you with a presentation from the costs for AT&T and Atlantic Broadband for their finalization, the conduit and all of that is included in this bid. We will owe the utilities. I just want you to be aware that you'll see me again, but it'll be down the road. We don't have to do it right away.
I imagine we, we'll see you again. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Uh, okay. Uh,
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we are on to um,
We have the add-on ten L.
Oh, that's right.
It's a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with Clean Space for janitorial maintenance services.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, first a little shout out to Valerie for turning this around so quickly. So thank you for that. Um, Clean Space is our janitorial service for this building, the Public Works Trailer and Publican Community Park. And their contract, their initial two-year contract expires October thirty first, so we would like to renew for one more year. Um, they did request a five percent increase due to all the costs of inflation that have occurred lately since the last two years. Um, but the contract only allowed for three percent, so we saved two percent and they agreed to this three percent increase for a total of two hundred and two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents.
And that's for what time period?
That is for November first through October thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Okay. Is there any public comment? All right. Commissioner Lama, do you have any questions? Commissioner Goldman? Commissioner Riscar? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are to twelve.
I'm sorry, twelve A.
Okay, so pedestrian safety and sidewalk enhancements. Um, you know, I just wanted to let you know, I, I had been talking to, to, to Chris about some ideas. I mentioned this in one of the um, commission meetings a while ago. You know, I'll, I'll start with the sidewalks with basically, um, you know, um, making the sidewalks uh, wider. You know, I see that especially along the east side of Collins, I see that the sidewalks uh, look very narrow, okay? And I see that some of these buildings have shrubbery on their frontage, you know? And I wanted to see if we could perhaps start a conversation with some of these buildings and some of these associations where, you know, they give us an easement so we could widen, at least they could give us a couple of feet and we could widen those sidewalks. I know that is very challenging. Um, there's utilities running underground for these buildings, but you know, we at least need to do our due diligence, start the conversations with some of these buildings and associations and see what that, um, what that yields. Um, aside from that, also, um, you know, regarding pedestrian safety, especially when it comes to, to, to the bike lanes, you know, you have that white sign which is very difficult to see and it kind of blends in, especially when the sun is hitting it, you could, you could hardly see it. So I was thinking of, you know, perhaps we could paint that uh, another color, a blue or a green, so it's more visible, okay?
On Collins Avenue?
On Collins Avenue, you know, that, 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 you have that, that biker that's painted on the, on the, on the actual street.
Chris, that's not, do we paint that?
I know he started the conversation with FDOT, yeah.
Started a conversation with the city and they actually told us that um, we could go ahead and actually put a permit uh, for that. We wanted to, well, I think, um, if you correct me if I'm wrong.
Chris, can you, can you get closer to your mic?
Correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think um, we would, I think they'd still have the um, decal in white and the area around it would be green or blue or a color like that. Wanted to show up more and apparently that does something to take out some of the glare.
Okay.
Yes.
Isn't it different like when you're like coming off the Lehman, i- i- where, where there's that, that intersection? Isn't it green there or is, I, I don't, isn't there a green lane? Maybe I'm confusing.
No, you're, you're thinking about the, the, the brake, the brake that's uh, from Aventura and it's a, like a crossing. It's a cro- it's a bike crossing. It's not the actual
Yeah, it's a bike crossing, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Well, but that's on a state road. I mean, that's on Collins, so if, maybe we can do something similar like that.
Well, he, he did start that conversation.
Well, that's what we're talking about is on Collins with this to change it. But you know, coming off of the Lehman, i- it's a narrow strip with the marker in it. That, that's a tough situation no matter how. When, when you come into the city from Golden Beach or you're coming off there, um, when you're going from Golden Beach, you end up in the middle of the road with the cars all coming off of the Lehman Causeway southbound. It's very difficult. That's where they've got the narrow lines with the, with the uh, decal in the middle of the road and then it just ends.
Yeah, and aside from uh, the actual color of the um, you know, to delineate the, 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 the biking lane, um, you know, Chris had mentioned and we were talking about, actually, you know, Hollywood has this and for the pedestrian crosswalks, they have, uh, they have it painted blue. So it's obviously more visible as well when pedestrians cross the uh, street. So um, that's something else to, to consider as well and to talk to FDOT about.
Yeah, that conversation started a while ago. So I, I know that, that, I agree with you with that, with definitely that because I had made that comment to Chris about six months ago that we should consider that because that definitely does stand out. For me, as far as widening the sidewalks, I, you know, I, I wish that that was thought of when all of this
Yes.
development started. I, I, I want to be realistic as far as anyone listening to this. The idea that someone's going to give over their private property is a hard
Well, it's an easement. Uh, uh, I mean, they, they give it to us for the uh, you know, beach access. So I don't know, at least have that conversation with some of these buildings. Uh, I know, we require that for the building too. But you know what? I get a lot of complaints from, you know, the residents in those same buildings. Everybody complains.
We do, we, we all do, we all do. Commissioner Goldman, do you want to add something?
Well, it's a, it's a financial issue essentially. If you're going to negotiate and take away uh, you know, parking spaces or you're going to take away area, you know.
You know, it's, it's really their frontage, you know, they have the shrubs and really it's like dead space.
Well, I'm all in favor of a top-down, you know, analysis and implementation of that and that's something that I advocate for, but I, I do, I do understand that, you know, there has to be a dialogue and some
Well, I think a simple meeting and, you know, see where it goes from there.
I, I remember.
Have that conversation started.
I remember having a, a similar conversation, may, may have been with Chris. I'm, I really don't remember. It was some time ago. Because I shared the same frustration. I rarely walk on the east, but one time that I did, it's like you're walking next to these humongous things and by comparison you have, like this tiny, tiny thing. But then I remember um, being told, well, even if you do widen the sidewalks, let's say we, we, you know, we have nice uh, buildings who say, sure, take four feet. But then you're going to have the, uh, light, light post then in the middle of the sidewalk. Like, and then do you want to go and deal with that or, or whatnot? I mean, for me, I would take the four feet. I'm not, you know, I, I'll walk around the post. But uh, but I don't know, again, how that would, how that would play out, but I remember that being part of um, like an outcome that was, that I hadn't considered.
That's a very, very good point, but I, I do want to bring up that there are places that we can do that and I think that this is something that um, Chris, I think you mentioned this to me before, for instance, at Town Center Park where we have the landscaping.
Right.
That is a large area between Winston Towers where we have a lot of children and, and strollers and
But we're doing that already. I mean, that's not, I mean, we've already paid for, and we paid for that as essentially. So again, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's some, uh, there's some financial or other component, you know.
No, I'm talking about where we have the Town Center Park to remove the landscaping and to extend that sidewalk along Collins. And any place that we can do that, I think that we can all agree that we should. And, you know, I, I, look, Commissioner Lama, I support any conversation that you want to start to have or that Chris wants to start to have. I just want to make sure that the um, to Commissioner Goldman's point, this is a financial discussion more than, you know, more than anything. So thank you. Thank you for that.
But it's a, it's, it's definitely something that I completely agree with and adhere to. But again, it's a, it's more of a top-down and a, a, a programmatic approach to that.
Okay.
Well, let's have that conversation, yeah.
Bees, you, again, Commissioner Lama.
Yeah. Okay, so um, last commission meeting, um, you know, it's a discussion item came up that um, Commissioner Riscar uh, put in the agenda. And it was the uh, the police chief uh, search process, you know? The actual agenda item, you know, as it was explained to me during, during our gender review, it was just to talk about the, 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 the actual process and to get some clarification on it. Um, you know, some of the uh, dates for the timeline came up, but I think that um, you know, when, when the actual commission meeting started, i- it was, I think there was some sort of disconnect. Uh, and, you know, I think what the purpose was because we had all voted previously when Bud was here, the previous mayor was here, we had all voted on this process. So I think, I thought that we're just going to discuss the actual process. So basically the dilemma became or the, 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 the question became, okay, do, do we go with the process that includes an external candidate for police chief? Or do we go with, you know, do we keep it just in-house, internal? Okay? So that was the real question and, you know, when the uh, commission meeting transpired, you know, and, and I spoke, I said that I was not ready. Uh, obviously it was something that caught me by surprise. But, you know, I was thinking about it. I did my due diligence. Um, you know, I thought about it a lot. I, I, I talked to a lot of people. Some people knew already that I was going around and, and, and talking and finding out what I needed to find out. Obviously, it's our obligation, our responsibility to, to do our due diligence. So, but after much thought and after completing all the information that I needed to gather and analyze, you know, I think that we should keep this, this process in-house, you know, for the, for the police chief. Um, why should we keep it in-house? I think that obviously we uh, we should keep it in-house because of the knowledge, you know, that you know, if we keep it in-house, we have um, we have uh, officers that have that knowledge, know the community very well. Um, they have those relationships already established. And also besides that, you know, that experience that they bring, I think that they could bring to the table, you know, any issues that need to be mended. They, they are aware of those. They will, you know, fix those issues, but also, you know, they will bring their, their own ideas to the table. Uh, I think that's important. I think they'll, they'll bring their own, let's say, brand and they could put on their, their, their own stamp in, in the police department. Obviously something, you know, we had two previous administrations of chiefs I, or chiefs and I think that um, they will have that opportunity. They, you know, some of these uh, candidates have been here a long time and um, I think that, you know, they, they deserve that opportunity as, as well. Um, and if you look at it just from a analytical standpoint, you know, why I also think that should be an internal decision from within. You know, if you weigh the uh, risk rewards, um, especially at this point in time, I think that i- i- it is better to promote from within. So I just wanted to start the discussion because last time it was, you know, I don't think we all got to speak. Um, you know, uh, again, I was caught by surprise, so I just wanted to hear your thoughts on this subject.
What, what is, are you making a motion or are you making?
No, no, I'm, I'm not making a motion. I just want to hear their, their thoughts on, on, on what I just said, that I, I, I believe that, you know, the process, you know, obviously we continue with the process, but
But what, can you clarify what you mean? You want to eliminate any candidates that are not within the department? Is that what you're saying?
I just want to keep it to candidates, uh, the, from, from the department in-house.
So you want to eliminate any
I want to eliminate any external, any, any external candidates. I think we should keep it in-house and, and, and look for a solution within our police department, yes. For the next chief within our police department.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you have anything that anyone wanted?
Here, let me, I'm sorry. Did you want to allow the comment, the public comment on this item, on discussion items?
Sure.
Okay, so in that case, Ari Steiger.
Ari Steiger, two six two Atlantic Island. Uh, I'm here for, as you know, like I spoke the last time, we should keep our chief, that's the interim chief in place. Look, that would happen in the, in city of Miami with, with between the commissioners and the mayor and, and the chief. It's going to cost him like four million dollars just to, to settle the lawsuit because he got fired after he got hired. So, and, and the same candidates that will come here, they've been going from city to city. You know, wherever the, wherever the chief is available, wherever the position is available. And they apply from city to city, but at the end of the day, if you take somebody from the city that knows the city and everybody that I speak to is for it, I don't think there is a reason to get somebody from outside and spend the money and spend the effort. And with, with, with this, the chief, whoever you're going to hire from outside is going to bring his own staff. And it's going to be a demoralization for the cops that are in the city. So I suggest, like I said, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Let's keep the chief in the position.
Thank, thank you, Aaron.
And Jerry Joseph.
Jerry Joseph, I would like to concur with Alex Lama, that I believe
I believe that this system, that this um, choosing of a chief should be internal and um, I did not um, concur with having an outside uh headhunter service uh be needed to begin with. Uh, we have excellent um, people within our uh offices now and uh we should give them a chance and choose from uh inside.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, so I, let me speak. I think I made myself very clear in the last commission meeting what what my uh preference was, uh very similar to uh what both Ari and and Jerry said that uh, I'm not gonna repeat it. I I I was very clear that I was in support of at that point naming uh Chief Granetti or interim chief Granetti our chief so that we could save the money on the process because I do believe and still believe we'll come to that same result, but obviously, uh I cannot make that that motion, so what what is your, what is your proposal, Alex?
So I wanted to hear from Commissioner.
You're asking if they changed their mind or?
Well, I, I'm.
Larissa, this is a discussion item. This is not a motion. This is not a re.
Well, I want to know.
I'm, yes, and I'm discussing. Do you have anything that you wanted to add?
I, Commissioner Viscara can start first.
No, I'm asking you.
No, I'm 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 basically saying the idea was, it's his discussion item and I'd like to hear from Commissioner Viscara.
I'm recognizing you.
I'm recognizing Commissioner.
You cannot recognize Commissioner Viscara.
Well, you can't recognize that, okay?
I I can. I I I preside over this meeting, so I can actually. So if you do not want to speak, that's fine, but I'm recognizing you now.
I don't, I, first of all, I think this is like a, this is an exercise in an intellectual vacuum because I don't even know who the candidates are. When you're postulating that we should have candidates from within, how many candidates from within are we gonna be considering? What you're discussing is different from what she's discussing. She's rehashing what happened last month and you're saying we should have a process where we invite only candidates from within, and that's what Jerry Joseph said. Who are the candidates from within? I I haven't heard candidates from within and I haven't heard, and I don't even know who the candidates are from without.
I agree.
So like what what, this is a complete discussion in an intellectual vacuum. That's my point.
Commissioner Viscara?
Go ahead.
Go 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 ahead, Commissioner Viscara. Please go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, my uh idea that I brought forth last month was an effort to prevent the politicization of this process. Adjusting the 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 schedule to something that we had already agreed to do so that we would make the choice before the special election, so that every district would have an experienced commissioner making the um, making the choice. Uh, subsequently, the the residents may not know that we, you know, we directed um the um, the recruiter to adjust his schedule and he was able to do it. Uh, obviously, we had to make certain adjustments. It basically cost some of our participation, the time that would have been devoted to our participation was cut out of that and we were able to squeeze it in, so we are on schedule to make our selection next week, which I think, I think in six days. Uh, hold on.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, just I could make it easy for you. Tomorrow, the twenty-second is when you're supposed to get their shortlist. At the twenty-seventh is supposed to be the um, meetings.
Finalist interviews and decisions on the twenty-seventh.
And he is still um on that. I did talk to him today anticipating you might ask.
So the discussion item of we should only interview candidates from within who are, it seems like it's inconsistent with what the process that we all agreed to, right?
Well, and and remember that the, what we spoke about last month is that the recruitment process is the inclusive process because it doesn't prevent the internal candidates from applying and in fact, I encouraged the interim chief to apply and he did. And so my my perspective is, we have six more days to go. Uh, the world hasn't fallen apart because we have a recruitment process and we have, we're gonna be able to know who who's in the mix or not. And if you support the the choice of of the interim chief, uh guess what? Let's assume, let's assume that three of us up here decide, you know, it's better to stay internal, it's better to stay with what we have. You can make that decision next week. After you, after you've had, after you've had the opportunity to see what other candidates, and I understand the reservation for, you know, the external and what happened with with my, with the Miami chief of police, that's somebody who was brought, I think, like from Texas or something, not familiar with the culture. Um, that was never gonna work. Whoever made that decision, that that was never gonna work. Uh, but I understand from the recruiter that we're looking at local candidates. Uh, it may, we may have people who have worked with the department before or who have worked with some of our officers before. Uh, there's a good chance, because it's not a huge pool, uh that um, that you're gonna be working with a familiar face. I don't know who those, who that list is. So I, so I don't know, but I know that if we're choosing, you know, from high-ranking people locally, it's not gonna be a stranger. It's gonna be somebody who's familiar with the with the um, with the culture, with the South Florida culture and probably even with some of our employees, employee, some of our officers. However, that doesn't mean that at the end of the day, when we weigh everything, we may very well say, you know what? Better, we, you know, we 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 decide to stay with with um, the interim chief. That's still an option. But I don't see why this far into it, five days short of that, or or six days or whatever it is, uh, we're gonna say, you know, no, because we've already, we're already in there and we can still make the same decision that that I assume that, you know, Mayor Svechny is on record, so the same decision that Mayor Svechny wants to make today, uh, this body can make after we've had the benefit of of the full recruitment process. Uh, and, you know, with that, you know, so we talked about new ideas. It's an opportunity for new ideas. I understand we have to weigh that against the institutional knowledge, that's somebody who's been here a long time. That has its value. But like uh Commissioner Goldman says, we're we are in a vacuum here. You're asking us to make a decision without knowing what we're ruling out. Whereas if we wait it out and we go through the process, we'll be able to make an informed decision. And by the way, Commissioner Lama, I I do want to commend you for doing your due diligence and and, you know, you you did your homework. You you came up with a new idea, you changed your mind. I think that's that's um, that's the way, you know. Just shooting from the hip is not, is not the way I like to do things. I respect, I respect the fact that you changed your mind and and that's fine. I didn't. Um, I'm still, I'm still in favor of of going through the process. We're just five days short.
Well, well, I mean, um, understood. I respect that. Um, you know, obviously, I did my my due diligence. I spoke to a lot of people, uh, which is a process I had started already by the time uh we had the previous commission meeting. But I think it is important to have special consideration for, I haven't seen the 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 shortlist, um, but for a- a- any internal candidate. Just because of the fact that they've been here, they have that historical knowledge, they have those uh relationships established with the community. Um, I think that they're well aware of any, you know, faults that need to be mended, that need to be fixed. Um, and they they will do that and also to bring new and fresh ideas to to the department. You know, so I think that that direction in 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 my opinion is is the best direction. Um, if you don't agree, i- i- it's fine, you know, we're we're not gonna agree all the time.
We can have a cake and eat it too.
No, I understand, I understand, but I think that, you know, perhaps, you know, from before we all voted for a process, we should have just taken a little bit more time and said, okay, let us digest this more and and let's let's look at, you know, at this, you know, once the uh the waters have settled a little bit, because obviously, we're going through, you know, that 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 period. So you know, my opinion is that we 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 go from within, um, you know, we hire from within, we promote, et cetera, and um, you know, that's the best direction. That's what I I believe.
Okay, well, thank you. I I appreciate it.
Commissioner Goldman?
I think that, you know, we all kind of beat this.
Yes, yes, but but I mean, going forward.
That, yeah, you know, there's six days, so I I appreciate you bringing this up again. I think we've all been clear on how each of us feels about this, so thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, we received the card after you called for public comment.
Since we're so close to the end and since normally we don't, you know, I I just want to keep, stay to the process. If we can move that to the citizens forum, that that's fine because it just comes next. We just stay within the 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 process. So you can speak, but it will just not be to twelve B. But you can say, you know, it's so, uh, so public comment?
Okay, so we're now in section thirteen.
Yes.
Citizens forum. Okay, so we do have.
Okay, citizens forum, I meant.
Taliai, I'm so sorry, Paul Kovich?
My name is Taliai Paul Kovich, United Two Eighty Southwest One Sixty-Eight Street, Palmetto Bay, Florida. I am about to become a resident, uh signing out. And I've been coming in here doing things around this area and I have to say that Mayor Svechny done an amazing job in this city as coming in here as a visitor and coming in here doing a business and on a police chief, ladies and gentlemen, you have amazing command staff. Look at, and if you want to see what your department is, talk to your rank and file. The officers are hitting the streets every day. You know, we have just lost two officers in Hollywood, Florida. You know, it's very important that as a commission and as a mayor and as the city manager, you support your police department. The reason is, I think that you are interim chief, we make an amazing police chief for this city. Look at your name, stop. Look at your officers, what they're doing. Look at the officers, how they handle the bridge jumper. You know, all those things that has to be in consideration. If you don't have a good command staff, you're not gonna have a good rank and file. Exactly simple in a police department or any kind of military institution. I ask you that you consider the interim police chief as your chief and thank you so much, what you guys doing and I'm so amazed by your police department. You guys got, I done business with your police department. They're amazing police department and I'm so happy to be future residents. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And next is Rumi Resonor.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, manager, everybody. I have a.
Just name, name an address for the record, please.
My name is Rumi Angruzdan, but two twenty-one eighty-sixth street. First of all, I want to say thank you for the lighting golden shores. The gentleman mentioned, I had to ask when it's gonna be start the underground. But if it's possible to know approximately, I know plus and minus always have. But we are very happy with the lighting. Thank you so much. Now the underground is gonna be, to see they start, that's enough. The third thing, the discussion, I think about the police chef. Too much discussion for what? Somebody working twenty-three years here and everybody support which is ridiculous discussion to take from outside. What's happened Miami date? They bring from North State and he has to be fired because they don't know. And this person here, twenty-three years, and you put question mark? Who worked three years in this city hall? You forgot to count. From twenty-three minus three, more twenty years you have to work to be on his experience and the previous chef, what's happened? He recommend, everybody like him because he is a good policeman, goo- good coworker. Everybody, the whole city and the resident. I don't understand what is this trick? She has to go further and you have to be more consistent. Yes, no, we gonna see, never gonna see. Think about what is right. We need police from our city, not from outside. And to outside like Jennifer Wong, she's gonna spend our taxpayer money to find out. For what? Ambitions? What is your, this is your personal ambitions. That's it. That's my conclusion. I don't know why, but it's a personal you have something personally. This is not for the city. Are you working for us to spend our money to be more interesting?
Thank you, thank you.
That is it.
Okay, thank you everyone for uh attending and staying and um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Good night.